Sure.
Either one is fine. I think you have a copy of the Finance Committee Investment Cash Report for 2015 for the Rochester Community School Corporation. We earned interest that you can do $4,438.96. And then there's bank balances current at the end of the year for all the other accounts. Those are the past financial accounts that you can see the accounts. We are still in the process of closing out year-end figures and making corrections to accounts that we found were still too long fund or things such as that. So some of the numbers, especially in the general, which is your majority of accounts that are being paid out of, could change. I don't look for that to happen as of today. I believe that we have most of our purchase orders cleared up and errors that we've found straightened out and corrected. So I do not feel that the cash balance is going to change. Given the $4,438.96, I posed the question to Mrs. Vance, have they taken cash management bids in the last few years to see what's out there, to see if things are in line? It's kind of a long and tedious task to change banks because there's so many things that you have to change. But it would seem to me that if you have a sweep account balance that averages $2 million every month, you ought to be able to get more than $4,000 a year in interest.
What does that compute to annually for interest?
I did not calculate that out. Each month they have a little different number, you know, point zero, 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 you know, whole bunch. But it's just that $2 million is a lot of money. I mean, you could probably divide that out and see what average interest is.
Right. It's less than a quarter. Yeah, it's less than a quarter.
I realize that interest is low and, you know, and all that. And it may not go back up very quickly is one my hope. But that is still a pretty large balance, just, I guess, to shake the tree and see what's out there.
So your recommendation would be to see other bids from other banking communities? And I understand you can't do that through a credit union, right? Just a bank?
Correct. They have to be insured and be able to set public minds and so forth. I would think it wouldn't hurt just to shake a tree and see. Should you even choose not to because you're getting what you're going to get, at least you know.
It'd be good fiscal stewardship that way.
That would be my thoughts on this. Valerie and Jana, of course, you as the board will make that final decision.
Any questions from the Board of Denise or anything? Are there any Denise, before we do that, is there anything you see that raises a red flag or you're concerned about?
Not particularly. I know Mrs. Vance has been concerned with the low cash balance in the general fund. There's a couple of options that we've talked about that you could increase your general fund, but they have to be worked out and just constantly be watching that. I worked at a school that we had a much bigger cash balance, but then I also intermed a corporation that had a much less cash balance. So I'm not particularly worried about it at this point, in my opinion, but...
Any questions from the Board or Superintendent Vance on the Treasury?
I don't have any questions. I'd like to begin by publicly thanking for Denise. She came in and covered for us in a difficult time, a difficult transition time. And we're excited to have Valerie on board and to see those two work together today was a unique experience. But I'll tell you, Denise brought laughter into the office and I have learned more, and I think Julie has shared this with me as well, I have learned more in the short period of time that Denise has been here than I have learned for many, many years in regards to school finance. And so I want to publicly thank you for your patience with me and your mentoring and your teaching. And you have been not only educational in the office, but you've been a great addition for the morale in the office as well. So thank you.
Thank you.
With that being said, I have also shared with you Denise and Valerie, and I had the opportunity to meet with Umba today. So I would like to bring to the Board a Finance Committee and to the Board collectively as a whole, the idea around an investment policy that I have shared here in front of you. And I'm going to ask the ladies to join in at any point in time that they would like because they sat in on the same conversation. Now that we have been granted these bonds, we have about $9 million in two separate... There's one point, I painted out most of my copies, there are two separate buckets of money that we would be dealing with in those bond proceeds. Part of what we're doing is, I thought Mike was going to say thank you. Part of what we're doing is we are setting on a large sum of money. Denise just shared the sweep account, that $2 million in the interest being earned. We have the opportunity that we could be earning interest on that large pool of money that the bond money that we already have in our possession. I think that in an effort to make the best of what the taxpayers have granted us and given us and supported us in, to have that just set idle in a bank account over the next two and three years as we unroll these projects, probably isn't a good fiscal responsibility on our part with those funds. So I would like to just entertain the idea about an investment policy. Part of those conversations that we spoke about, we wanted to make sure, first of all, Mr. Schaller brought forth the question, can we do this without any penalty or jeopardy? And it was shared to us, and ladies, I may have to lean heavily on you at some point, that in order for us to be penalized, there is a formula that they take into account, the rate at which we sold the bonds for, the rate of which we would get interest back on those, and then over the period of time that we would be collecting that interest on these bonds. And they felt that we weren't even going to come close to that formula, was what I took from that conversation. What that tries to do is there was a time in the past when school corporations within other government entities would ask for bond monies and continually live off the interest from those bond monies. And that wasn't good for taxpayers. It wasn't good fiscal responsibility. So we are able to do this. There are other schools in the area. We asked who might else be doing this? And he shared that Warsaw is in this process. Dan Foster at Eastern Polaski is in this process and have had no problems reinvesting those funds for that short period of time. We have worked with Terry Thornsberry about project rollout. But some of these funds, we're going to be setting on for long term before we even begin engaging in those contracts with construction companies. So I would respectfully take to the Board of Finance this investment policy that I have shared with you.
Would that be more of a resolution or a policy?
Well, there's two aspects of it. One is that the resolution adopts the attached investment policy. And so it would be both a policy and a resolution. And did we end up with an ordinance on that?
Well, there are actually two resolutions. My understanding is that the policy would come first because we need an investment policy that would govern our board and our district, how we handle that in this, not only in this case, but investments overall. Then after that, there would be two resolutions. And this would help keep us in compliance so that we're not holding on to those funds. The first is that the investment of public funds for more than two years, but not to exceed five years, which keeps us in that legal compliance that Mr. Schaller respectfully brought up in our meeting. And then the next resolution, making sure that the funds are invested in secure funds. And Lisa Lee brought up that question in regards to making sure that they are invested soundly. We also talked about fluidity, that we would still have access to these funds, we would be in constant communication with Umba and making sure that they're managing, that we are forecasting when our next round of bills is due, so that that is constant communication so they can be monitoring those funds and the transfer of the funds and where they are investment-wise.
Yeah, if you look at the resolutions under before you, one of them is for authorizing investment pursuant to Indiana Code 513-95.7. And 5.7 is the approval of a political subdivision investment policy. And that's the policy that's in front of that. The other resolution is 9.5, Section 5 and Section 5.3. Section 5 authorizes the investment into certificates of deposit. And 5.3 authorizes into an interest-bearing deposit account. So you've got different kinds of accounts. Some of you may remember that about 15 years ago, Miami County invested in some bonds out in California that rapidly turned bad. And if you go through the statutes, you'll find out that they went back and cleared that up for the county auditor in Miami County. Denise, you were here when that was happening, the Herald, weren't you? And so, you know, the state took a very close look at it and carefully drafted these statutes to try and authorize some investment, letting the money sit there, holding benefits of the bank where the money's sitting. And so I think what the Board of Finance would do would recommend to the school board the adoption of the policy and those two resolutions. So that would be a one action. The whole board, if the trustee is the Board of Finance, the officers can lead them through that. And then during the school board meeting, they could address the issue in detail.
So do we want to table that then until the school board meeting?
No, I think you want to make a recommendation to move forward if you want to.
And I will apologize. I know that this seems very rushed. It was the first time that we could get Valerie, Denise, you know, business experience and Umba here at a common table. But I do feel a sense of urgency for ourselves and in good faith to the taxpayers in that we won't even begin paying out of this for six, eight, 10 weeks. And so we have these literally millions of dollars that we're setting on that the bank is doing nothing with other than...
So to put it layman's terms, because people watch RTC4 all the time.
Sure.
We have this pile of money. It's not going to be used right now for the building. So in order to be good stewards of the money, we would invest it in solid investments to gain money back from it.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, knowing that...
But while still be their obligations to pay for these things we told the people we're borrowing for the bonds for, correct?
Knowing that if we did not, we would be setting on these funds for literally portions of these funds for up to three years.
Sure.
Period of time without collecting anything off of them. They would just be setting in an account.
Steve, can I ask you a question for Ted? On 5.7 under Section C, it limits us to 25% of our portfolio. Is that correct?
Yeah, the portion that extends beyond two years.
Okay. So a portion that doesn't extend beyond two years could be greater than 25%?
Well, the other 75% can be...
Now and for the next two years?
Well, it must be invested for less than two years.
Okay.
So, and there was a chart of when we expect to bring things out. So what you do is you ladder your different investments. So, you know, if we have to pay for this remodeling, or we have to pay for temporary classrooms, or we have to pay for something, and we know approximately when that's going to be and approximately how much it's going to cost, those monies come available until then they're invested. But anything over two years, out of the $8 million, we wouldn't be able to invest more than about $2 and a quarter million for more than two years.
Okay.
It's going to have to be a constant communication between Umba, Terry Thornsberry, and myself to continue to monitor this. But we're all willing to do that, to do what's best with the monies.
I had a question on the construction funds. So did we sell all 9.9 million? It comes out to 8.3 million right now. I know we've had some expenses with the...
Well, if you'll recall, there were two parts to that. There was, number one, the purchase of the old school.
Columbia lease?
Columbia lease, which is 8. whatever. And then the other 1.3, which is being held at Huntington Bank until they receive instructions.
Okay.
So it's all there.
So scheduling the construction draws will be very important because is there any penalties for pulling out of an investment early?
There could be.
So that's why the scheduling and draws...
That's why scheduling is important.
Right.
Now, there are opportunities, if we have enough money in our capital projects funds, we can make a loan to cover between the two if we've got that amount of money available. But we'll just have to address that from point to point. And it's always a little better to have a safe fund on our side of the transaction so we're always maybe not invested the last dime from month to month.
Give us low flexibility in it.
Flexibility. Because you want the construction projects to be completed as quickly as they can. You don't want to tell people, slow down because we can't pay you anyway.
When you say invest, it's just basically CDs or...
CDs, a particular brand of money market investments, money market accounts, and government treasury bonds.
What is the safety difference between keeping the money in our account and investing it in these? What's the safety difference, or is it the same?
Everything we invest in is supposed to either be backed by the government, like a treasury bill, or be insured through FDIC. So there should be no difference.
There should be no difference.
Obviously, there's a difference because if there wasn't a difference, they wouldn't pay any more or any less. But the legislature's not allowing you to go out and invest in the stock market or anything like that, so...
So as the Board of Finance, Steve and I, we would recommend that we adopt both the resolutions and the policy. And during a regular board meeting, that would be the recommendation of the Board of Finance.
Right. So it's a policy that takes three readings, is that correct?
At all, you know, with unanimous consent of the board, you can waive, you can continue from one reading to the next without a period of time between that.
We can consider today day one of the reading, first reading.
Right. And with unanimous consent, you can finish it up to date as well if you need to.
Do all three.
Do all three.
I didn't know we could do three.
Yeah, I thought before we could do two and three together, but not all.
You can do all three at any one time with unanimous consent. The board has always wanted to hold off on doing it that way simply because of perception of that, but you do have the permission.
But if we don't do all three, then we're one month out. So that would leave this money sitting for a month.
Correct.
And give anybody from the public an opportunity to ask questions.
Unless you address it at the study session, if you have a meeting, and you will be having a board meeting, study sessions, if you want to hold up, then that'd be November 3rd.
Correct.
Which is just a couple of weeks. I would be far more comfortable doing that than all three.
Any other comments from the Board on the Board of Finance meeting?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Is there any public comment for the Board of Finance meeting? Anybody like anything to say?
You want to take a vote on the recommendations?
We would be voting on, I guess, do I need a motion for that? I am accepting a motion or entertaining a motion for recommending the investment policy and resolutions for the regular board meeting.
So moved. Sandy?
Can I do that? Yeah.
So motion by Lisa, second by Sandy. All in favor signify by raising your right hand. Carry 6-0.
Okay. I guess we adjourn.
Are we ready to adjourn? Yeah, with that, if there are no further comments, we won't adjourn the Board of Finance meeting. So adjourn.
Okay. Thank you, Brad. Thank you, Steve. At this time, we'll have the public hearing regarding the superintendent's contract. In your packets and on our website was posted superintendent's contract. Any comments from the Board about the contract? Anybody in the public have any questions? Okay, if not, this time we'll close the public hearing on the superintendent's contract. Thank you. Okay, now we'll start our regular meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. I pledge allegiance and I'm almost silent. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, native people, with liberty and justice for all. To start with consent items, we have the minutes of the December 14th, 2015 regular meeting, certification of the December 14th, 2015 executive session, minutes of the January 6th, 2016 special meeting, and minutes of the January 6th, 2016 study session. Are there any additions or corrections? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent items. Minutes. Okay, motion by Sandy.
Can I second that?
Seconded by Steve. Enter discussion.
Just a second.
Don?
I think the finance report is part of the consent items.
Okay. This will be for the minutes and, let's see, the certification. Yes, well, finance will be after this. So this is for the minutes and the certification of the executive session. And Sandy, you still have the motion on that. And Steve, any other questions? All in favor, write in. Okay, motion carries 6-0. Now we'll have the financial report. Valerie?
Through the financial report that's been provided to everybody this evening, the general fund, debt service, capital projects, transportation, and bus report that's provided, beginning and ending balances are also reflected. Help me out if you could. Is there any specific questions that anybody had in regards to the cash flow balances or would you like me to go through, beginning and ending balances for 2015 as well?
You can go through each of the balances each.
Great, great. So the general fund ended in 2015 on December 31st with $418,603.52. The debt service fund ended with $1,157,960.34. Capital projects fund ended with $849,603.3. Transportation fund ended with $944,854.4. And then last but not least, the bus replacement fund ended with $287,068.
Any questions?
I've got a question on the financing check. I saw it in passing, but I can't find it. Checks regarding the fencing work.
One that was paid out.
That were not, that hasn't been quite completed yet. I was wondering if we...
Well, as we get into the approval of those claims, on claim number 8824 dated 1/18/16, voucher number 8824 to, in regards to fencing and Rick Miller, there have been several questions that have come up in the recent past in regards to the fencing at Columbia. But what this is for here is for work on the tennis court fence and then the fall maintenance on the operators at the high school. However, what I did find, as a lot of questions were coming up on his side, that we have been doing some research and having some concerns on, is that I was given a proposal in regards to fixing or repairing the tennis court on 12/29/15. And at that time, to repair and take care of the tennis court and the damage that was done during the ice storm, the proposal at that point in time was $825. What he ended up billing the school for was $975. So there's a discrepancy there that I am uncertain as to why the change. Now, the $175, Lisa, this is a combined amount of what was billed for repairing the tennis court as well as the fall maintenance on the gate operators at the high school, which is $175. That's how we got the $1,150 total. But I would just share with the board, I am not sure why the difference now between the $825 proposal to fix the fence and the $975 billing of the fence. And did not until late this afternoon, early this evening, catch the differences as I was talking with Ted and the ladies in the office in regards to that.
And it doesn't list anything different between the two either?
No, it does not.
20% increase essentially. And that check is right there.
You would be approving the amount tonight, so I would, that's why I'm sharing this information with the board so that you can make your decisions based on that there is a discrepancy in the quote amount and the final billing amount. And I don't see any differences, nor was anything explained to me as to why there was a $150 difference in the two.
So this total could be changed to reflect the quoted...
To the 825 and then the 175, which would be the $1,000 check rather than the amount which is stated, which is $1,150, which is what the claim is for.
Is that your recommendation?
My recommendation would be for the $1,000 that was originally shared with the district as the amount that we were going to owe for services.
So we already made payment and we set the check?
No, no. You would be approving those POs tonight to release the funds.
So the question is, do we...
Correct. So the question would be, are you comfortable with the $1,150 or the original quote, which was 825, and then the operator, the fall maintenance on the operators, which was 175? I think Tommy can see what I'm looking at.
So the procedure would either be to approve the financial report submitted or to amend claim number whatever to, from 1150 down to $1,000, and then approve the rest of the financial report? That would be my recommendation, too. Honestly, I don't know why it costs $825 just to straighten the poles, but that's what we've got. So do we have a motion to...
Move that we approve the transactions as stated, less the one in question. And I don't have the number in front of me.
It's claim number...
It's claim number 8824.
Yeah, with the exception of 8824, to be written for $1,000 versus the 1150 as stated.
Do I have a second?
Can I second that?
Okay. Any other questions? All in favor? Okay, motion carries 6-0. Now we, thank you, Valerie. Glad to have you on board, first meeting here, so...
And in good faith, I shared with Denise that once we got through that, if she wanted to leave, that she could. She feels, you know, retirement doesn't go until seven or eight o'clock at night is...
Before I forget, since I do it in the Board of Finance, thank you, both you and Valerie. Thank you very much.
She's done a wonderful job.
I get nervous easily.
Yes, we appreciate everything you've done, Denise, step in and help us out, time when we needed it.
Thank you, that's good. I've enjoyed myself. These girls are good girls, so. Thanks, Ben.
Thank you. Ted, did you...
Yeah, she, the financial report.
Did you approve payroll?
No, we're going to that.
Okay, I do.
We had a motion on that, but now we need a motion to approve the payroll and the financial report.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Brad.
I'll second.
And seconded by Lisa. Enter discussion, all in favor? Okay, motion carries 6-0. Okay, motion carried six zero. Thank you, thank you, Valerie. Okay, we'll move on to the student stakeholder focus, the donations. And we have quite a list. And I'd like to say again how much we appreciate donations, because a lot of these things are going on here and activities couldn't be done without the help of the community. And I'll read through the donations at this time. Sciota Zi, RHS reading counts, $50. Optimus Club, RHS Spell Bowl team for Spell Bowl t-shirts, $112.50. Matt's Buzzers, RHS academic team, $250 grant. Joel Lowell, RHS Industrial Arts Tech for Robotics trip, $13. Gold County REMC, RHS Senior Breakfast, $500. Sci-iotazi Riddle, reading counts, $50. Mill Creek Church, Columbia Zebra Zone, $2,500. Blue Apple United Methodist Women of Hat Grace, United Methodist Church, Columbia Gloves and Hats. Presbyterian Church, Columbia Gloves and Hats. Global Health Chiropractics, Columbia Handmade Gloves and Hats. The Guild Group of Grace Methodist Church, RMS Student Needs, $95. Walmart, RMS PBIS 32-inch TV. Notre Dame Athletic Department, RMS PBIS, four Notre Dame men's basketball tickets. Zebra Football Moms, RMS PBIS Zebra Winter Headband. Nubianos, RMS PBIS, two 7-inch, one-topping pizzas. Winning Edge, RMS PBIS, $50 gift certificate. Country Lanes, RMS PBIS, one free bowling game for every student with perfect attendance. RMS Faculty Fund, RMS PBIS iPod, $15 iTunes gift certificate, earbuds, Tootsie Roll Pops, Gobstopper, snowball treats. Annual Happy Birthday Jesus Open House, Alyssa Campbell Chairwoman, undergarments and personal hygiene items. And the Presbyterian of Wabash, RMS Three Ring Binders. Are there any other donations that we...
There is in addition $50 Sciota Zi to middle school reading counts. That should have been separate in your packet.
Okay, number six, I've got it listed as a $50 one from Sci-iotazi reading counts.
But this one's for middle school.
Oh, middle school, okay. So we'll add that to the list. Any other questions or comments? Need a motion to approve the donations.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Sandy.
I second that.
And second by Steve. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried six zero. Thank everybody once again for the donations. We have an overnight field trip, FCC LA.
I don't mind, I don't know if you have anything to add in regards to Jenny Snyder's FCC LA trip?
This is their yearly trip to their national conference over the last seven years.
It gives the students a chance to present projects, to do some public speaking, to share information that they have learned and gathered, but also to hear from other students involved in FCC LA throughout the state and bringing them together. I know in the past, we've always sent the students with no problems, it's well-supervised. Jenny does a wonderful job with that overnight field trip for those kids, and it's a culmination project for them.
Do you know the locations?
I know it's down in Indianapolis. At one of the hotel conference centers down...
Marriott East.
Marriott East, thank you.
Page 61 of your packet. Yeah, Marriott East, Indianapolis. Any other questions on that field trip? And we also have an overnight field trip for the high school wrestling team.
The last seven years, Mr. Gard has taken wrestlers that are interested to the state final wrestling tournament, which starts on one evening and continues into the next day. This is for them to be able to do that.
Any questions on that field trip? Not, we'll need a motion to approve the two overnight field trips.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Brad, second by Sandy. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried six zero. Information Analysis Policy and Procedures.
Lisa, I don't know if you want to share anything from our meeting with Tom McKay?
Sure. Jenny and Mrs. Vance and I met with Tom McKay from Neola to go over our 28-2 packet. It was a good meeting, it was a long meeting, I think we had five or six hours in before it was over. So it was a first go-through, and so we will be bringing those to the board in bite-sized chunks until we get through it.
Was that 27-2 or 28-2?
28, I'm sorry, it was 28-1. We still have 27-2, which is small, but we still have 27-2. Thank you. 21.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. The Veridian contract regarding the high school HVAC renovation project.
Terry Thornsberry was here at our last study session and shared information in regards to the roofing project, and then has sent us the contract regarding the HVAC system at the high school that he has spoken to the board about at that study session. I begun, started conversations with Adam, what that's going to look like for his building, and invited him to start joining us in those conversations, so he's aware of those future dates moving forward. But this would just be the board approval to go ahead and approve Veridian and Terry Thornsberry as the providers of that HVAC renovation project at the high school.
So does that include his prices with this, or is that a different...
Yeah, everything is included in that, just as it was. It would be the standard, as he shared with the roofing project as well. You should have a copy of that in your board packet as well.
Try to scroll down to it. It'll be about page 70. Is it page 70?
Seventy through 77, I think. Take a minute to look through it real quick.
Jana Superintendent, do you know if there's any major differences, I mean, major differences besides the scope of the work from this contract to the one that you had previously?
Not to my knowledge. I didn't see any discrepancies. In fact, it reads very, very similarly to the roofing contract that was presented just a few weeks ago at the study session and was approved at that one meeting.
So it looks like $4.5 million, does that sound correct?
For the high school...
The high school HVAC?
Forty, where are you?
72.
Yeah, I believe that those are the estimates. The bids have not, obviously have not gone out yet, yeah, four and a half.
Yeah, this is just an agreement on how we're gonna relate to the architecture.
Exactly, exactly. We haven't even started pre-bid or anything in regards to this. The first pre-bid that will go out will be regarding the roofing project. This is the contract to draw up the scopes and the specs and...
So is additional hourly rates, which are posted, are same as they have been?
Correct.
Any other questions? It's not a motion to approve the Veridian contract regarding the high school HVAC renovation project. Okay, motion by Sandy.
Second.
Second by Don. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried six zero. We're moving on to the personnel report.
We were on policy procedure. Is this where you bring up the policy, the resolutions for the finance?
No. Okay. Okay, the finance committee recommended moving forward with the two resolutions. We have an opportunity to consider all three readings tonight. It has been suggested, second, third reading will be at study session, next study session, which will be in about two weeks, in order to give public time for input. So we'll need a motion to approve going on with the recommendation of the finance committee on the two resolutions.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Lisa.
Second.
And second by Sandy. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried six zero. Thanks for the reminder, Don. Okay, now we're moving on to the personnel report. Okay, hirings. Joe Clark, temporary first grade instructional assistant till middle of January 2016. First grade teacher, returning lead position starting at the middle of January 2016. Jamie Hartsler, first grade instructional assistant at Columbia. Kayla Sheetz, special education instructor, instructional assistant at RHS. Valerie Gillespie, district treasurer. We have terminations of Ashley Nielsen, RMS instructional assistant. Vicki Turnbull, turnpole, RHS building technician. Reassignment, Shelley Gibson from Athlake, secretary to RMS instructional assistant. And temporary reassignments, Sue Cash from RMS media coordinator to interim athletic secretary. Deanna Van Amosh from RHS media coordinator to RMS media coordinator. RHS intercession, Deb Wolfher, mathematics. And Felix Hamandi, English. And we have the retirement, Reba Kreip. Any questions? Okay, the motion to approve the personnel report, that's read.
I move to approve the personnel report.
Okay, motion by Steve.
Second.
Second by Brad. Any other discussion? All in favor? Okay, motion carried six zero.
If I may, I would just like to share that Reba Kreip has been with the district since April of 1981, 35 years of service to the district here and to our students and our kiddos, so we want to make sure that we take the time to thank her. I would like to propose that on February 22nd, immediately prior to our board meeting, that we have a small reception with refreshments for Reba, and I'll make sure that I get the word out to the community and as well as to our faculty and staff here and those drivers. I know that they're going to want to come and honor Reba for her 35 years of service and has transported a lot of kiddos in and out of the district and served in various positions from IA to working at the building level as secretary positions, those types of things. So just really want to make sure that we honor her that evening on February 22nd, if we could, please.
That'd be great.
When is her retirement?
Her retirement is effective January 29th, the last day of this, the last working day of this month.
Superintendent business.
Just a reminder, I did hand out a conflict of interest form at the beginning of this meeting. If you could, please make sure that we have those turned back into us by the end of this month. Also, gentle reminder that on February 3rd at 8:45, we will do the building walkthrough at Rochester Middle School, and Oscar and I have been communicating about that and what that agenda might look like. Additionally, I have confirmed with Poblano's on January 27th of this month, at 11:30, we will do a lunch and learn with the superintendent and board. And Brad Weaver and Sandy Tyler have volunteered to be the board members at that luncheon on January 27th, and I did confirm with that restaurant this afternoon. We try to make sure that we reach out to as many different venues as we can as we proceed through this. Last month was a breakfast with the board at McDonald's, and we're going to try this month at Poblano's. That's all I have.
That has been turning out, worked out pretty well for us, communication. I encourage the public to come to one of these. Great opportunity to casually ask questions and get some answers to things you have going in your mind, and even complaints if you have them. We'll take those too, but, so welcome everybody to the lunch and learns.
I think in our last month, we had maybe eight or 10 people.
Yeah. Yeah, we had a great turnout.
Good turnout, good questions.
Yes, absolutely.
Good questions, too. Okay, board have any other business or comments? Public, any questions or comments? If not, we'll adjourn the meeting. Thank you for coming.